Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The date is April 5, 2023, and I'd like to welcome you to our special school board meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Okay, moving forward. On January 25, 2023, Administrative Law Judge Lynn A. Quimby Pennock, excuse me, Pennick issued a recommended order in the matter of the School Board of Sarasota County versus Garen Schaefer, State of Florida Division of Administrative Hearing Case Number 22-0484TTS. Melissa Mihawk, and forgive me if I'm not saying that correctly, Esquire, Mrs. Schaefer's attorney, had filed 15 written exceptions to the recommended order pursuant to Florida Statute 120.57/1I. The Board must enter a specific ruling regarding each written exception. After considering the exceptions, the Board will consider and rule upon the recommended order in light of any exceptions granted by the Board. The Board has the ability to adopt, reject, or modify any findings of fact, conclusions of law, or the recommended penalty in the order. Petitioner Sarasota County School Board versus respondent Garen Schaefer, Florida Division of Administrative Hearing Case Number 22-0484TTS. We'll start with opening remarks from Melissa Mihawk, if she's not here.
I don't believe she's zoomed in yet, Madam Chair. We may want to give her a few minutes to see if we can find her and make sure her credentials are in order.
Okay. I don't want to go out of order from the proceeding standpoint, so shall we halt? Are there additional comments?
Yeah, let's give it five minutes and see what goes on with her.
Would it be appropriate we recess for five minutes?
Yes.
Okay. This meeting stands recessed until 9:06. Melissa Mihawk here, available on Zoom. Can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much for joining us. We are to the opening remarks, and we'll give you the floor. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh, so we're at the agenda point where we will lead. You can provide your opening remarks.
Oh, usually the school board goes first. Okay. Are we going through the argument page, a part of the...
I'm going to defer to counsel, or...
I don't mind going first.
The way the agenda is set up is the first we have the exceptions, and then the response to the exceptions. So if you would rather Mr. Robinson goes first, I think we're fine with that.
I was thinking that what the Chair was referring to was an opening statement as opposed to...
Preliminary remarks?
Yes, preliminary remark or opening statement.
I think that we've all been through this long enough. I'll waive the opening statement.
I'm fine going straight to the exceptions.
All right. So then Ms. Mihawk has the floor to introduce her first exception.
Okay. And again, I'm not going to waste everybody's time here. We've been through this for a couple of years now. I'm not going to go through each individual exception to the findings of fact, as I've already written them down on paper, and we've already got responses to them. And I guess I missed the part where the Board, I'm sure, said that they reviewed the record, all of the record. Is that accurate?
We have not gotten to that yet.
Okay. Well, at some point, we will get to it, and I'm sure you've all read more than you want to. Just basically, the main things I want you to take away from the exceptions to the findings of fact are that the... There were many people at the school district that knew that Ms. Schaefer suffered from, maybe not necessarily MS specifically, but that she did suffer from some type of medical ailment and that she had lifting restrictions. And also, the second finding of fact that I think is vitally important is that progressive discipline was not followed in this case, and there were no extenuating circumstances that would lead the school board to go outside of that provision of the collective bargaining agreement. The incidents that happened, which took up most of 90% of, I would say, the time that we spent in the hearing for the Division of Administrative Hearings, was related to things that happened when Ms. Schaefer was at a different school and a different position with a different principal, doing different things. And we took the stance now, and we continue to take the stance that that was completely irrelevant. So those are just the two things to take away most from the findings of fact. Of course, I would love it if you would adopt all of my exceptions of findings of fact, but that's probably not going to happen. So moving on to the conclusions of law and the recommended penalty, that, of course, is the main issue that we have here with the recommended order. The conclusions of law that Ms. Schaefer had violated several statutes or rules and school board policies are inaccurate. Again, I think they're based upon irrelevant happenings that may or may not have happened, actually, prior to this investigation that are not related, and, again, are when she was in a different position with a different school, with a different supervisor, and they happened many years ago also. I think you need to note that as well. And the recommended penalty is simply just too harsh. I know that Mr. Robinson is going to say, well, there was a recommendation for a suspension, so therefore we did follow progressive discipline. Well, the bottom line is the suspension wasn't ever issued, so it's not following progressive discipline if you're going to skip that step. And Ms. Schaefer is a more than 20-year employee. She has many things to offer there. I think that's evident by the fact that this case itself has been going on for many years, and you all have allowed her to remain employed by the district, albeit with adult education students. And maybe that's her place. Maybe that's the answer to all of this, is to not terminate her employment so close to when she's about to retire. And to lessen the recommended penalty, allow her to work, but perhaps put a limit in the scope of her employment and just limit her to working with adults, or some other limitation that you may come up with. But there is something short of an actual termination of employment, which will devastate her and will devastate her employment and ruin her 20-plus years that she had there at Sarasota County. So we ask that you, considering the entire record, all of the facts that were alleged, even assuming that you put them all in the worst light towards Ms. Schaefer, still just mitigate that penalty and not terminate her employment, and I'll reserve whatever time I have left for afterwards.
Mr. McKinley, yeah, I'm going to defer to you because we do have multiple agenda items, so I'm just going to take direction from counsel.
Yeah, now it's Mr. Robinson's chance.
Well, the way we had done these in the past is we had considered each exception, and actually, there was a vote on it. So...
As far as I'm concerned, that's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing. All right. So I'm going to start with the first exception.
Thank you.
And that is exception to fact number 13 in the record. It relates to the issue of the attempt by Mrs. Schaefer and her counsel to interject a medical explanation for why these events could not have happened. When we first heard this, we consulted with Mr. Hareda, who was the district's representative at the hearing, to look at the personnel records to determine if, in fact, there had been some disclosure to the district and request for accommodations for disability. At the hearing, this is only referred to as MS. It isn't... We don't really know what that is. It was never told to the judge or to us what MS stands for. We could all assume something, but I'm not going to do that because that's not in the record. The medical... There was no medical testimony, and the letters we received from doctors that did not testify were dated after the dates of the incidents in question. And actually, one of them was dated after the termination letters that were sent out by the then superintendent. So we know that, and your counsel has laid out what this Board can and cannot do with a recommended order, but we do know that, you know, generally speaking, the ALJ, the Administrative Law Judge in this case, in her order, she weighs the evidence, she judges credibility of witnesses, and she interprets evidence to determine what the conclusions might be. Why does she get to, or he get to, do that? Well, it's because they're there and they actually hear all of this firsthand. This went on for two days. We're supposed to have a third day. Didn't happen. So we had multiple witnesses for the district. Mrs. Schaefer testified along with her two children. So the ALJ is in the position to hear all of this, to weigh it, decide what she's going to give, or he is going to give weight to, and then make determinations which are included within the findings of fact, conclusions of law, in the RO, recommended order, that you have. So I believe it was within the province of the ALJ to make a determination that this just wasn't enough evidence to establish any type of medical reason why this event, these events, could not have happened. Most importantly, much like you do with a disability claim, you've got to bring... You've got to notify the district of that in advance and request some form of accommodation, which did not happen. We also had the testimony of two independent witnesses. These were paraprofessionals who had been assigned to her classroom that summer at Tatum, and both of those testified that at no time did Ms. Schaefer ever mention anything about the fact that she couldn't lift anything. So if that's true, and you can't, and you've got two able-bodied young women, paraprofessionals who are there, you would think that you would want to mention that to them so that if there was a necessity to lift something heavy in the room, that they would be the ones to do it, or maybe even got someone from the outside. But yet, there's no evidence of that at all. So I think it's well within the prospect of the ALJ to have made that determination. And frankly, we would say that that finding of fact in paragraph 13 is more than supported by the substantial competent evidence in this case.
Is your mic on?
I thought it was on. There I am. Okay. The next part of our process is to look at the recommendation under item one, and that's basically your decision-making matrix. I'll read it into the record the first time, hopefully not thereafter. So the statutory role of the Board is to evaluate the exception, the arguments made by Ms. Mihawk on behalf of her client, and rule on it after consideration of all written and oral comment. The Board may reject the exception, which will result in upholding this specific provision of the recommended order. The Board may accept or modify the exception and reject or modify this specific provision of the recommended order based on the entire record. The Board may not reject or modify the findings of fact unless the Board first determines from a review of the entire record and states with particularity in the order that the findings of fact were not based on competent substantial evidence, or that the proceedings on which the findings were based did not comply with the essential requirements of law. So that's your process, to consider the things that are written, the written exceptions, the written responses, and the comments from counsel today, and address the first exception.
So we are at the moment where there, I would entertain a motion to either accept or reject.
I move that the Board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision, excuse me, of the recommended order.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments?
Yeah, it's a discussion purposes. So are we accepting... So when we are discussing this, we are rejecting the... Mihawk's, or the... We're rejecting their argument to the contrary of what the facts were.
The exception. You're rejecting the exception.
So if we accept the exception, that means we're finding on behalf of the employee in that they're exceptional.
That's correct.
Thank you for that, Clarence.
And all of these, all of them are set up that way.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And yeah, so it seems about, it's a double negative, but it does have to be in this format. So we have a motion on the floor to reject the exception, and there's a second. Are there any additional comments? Just for clarification, are these all voice votes?
Yes, voice votes will be fine. Yes, we need to have a voice vote.
Okay, just want to be clear. Okay, so I'll go down, do a roll call, just to, again, clarify that the motion on the floor that's been motioned and seconded is to reject the exception and uphold the specific provision of the recommended order. Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
And the Chair votes aye, and the motion to reject the exception and uphold the specific provision of the recommended order is passed unanimously. We will move on to the item number, Agenda Item 2. And Mr. McKinley, if you can just direct the appropriate parties.
Ms. Mihawk, this is... You have your chance here to comment on exception number two, on page seven, if you so desire.
I believe I stated everything in the written exceptions.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, this is actually a footnote. It relates to the same issue we just addressed previously, so I won't belabor the subject. I believe there was substantial competent evidence, and, of course, the ALJ, this is something where she weighed the evidence, and which is her prerogative.
And you're concluded?
Yes, ma'am.
So same process.
So I'll entertain a motion from the Board to either reject or accept.
I move that the Board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reject the exception and uphold the specific provision of the recommended order. Are there any comments? Seeing none, I will take a voice vote, and I'll start with Mrs. Marinelli.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
The Chair votes aye, and the motion to reject the exception and uphold the specific provision of the recommended order passes unanimously. Moving on to item number, Agenda, excuse me, Agenda Item Number Three. Mr. McKinley, I defer to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Mihawk, did you have anything to add to your previous argument on number three?
No, sir. It's all on paper.
Okay. Mr. Robbins?
Yes, I would like to just point out that this particular one, in the written version that I have, there is no explanation as to the legal nature of this exception. In other words, what's wrong with it? There are no citations to the record or the transcript, and I'm going to say this only once, but this happens throughout. When you file exceptions, you have to tell the agency where in the record the evidence is that swings this in your favor. And that's not the case in almost every exception we have here. So I only want to say this once. The statute gives the agency what I call high ground, for you to not decide an exception if there is no citation to any part of the record that would allow you to determine if there is or is not substantial competent evidence to support that fact that's being challenged. That part of the statute says that an agency need not rule on an exception that does not clearly identify the disputed portion of the recommended order by page number or paragraph that does not identify the legal basis for the exception, and that does not include appropriate and specific citations to the record. So this particular one, I can't even tell you what's wrong with it because we don't know it's not in there. So on that basis alone, I would ask you to reject the exception.
Point of clarification to either Mr. McKinley or Mr. Robinson, based on, and I don't have the statute in front of me, but based on what you just said, if I understand it correctly, are we to actually even take action on...
You have the discretion to reject it on the basis that Mr. Robinson recommended. I would suggest disposing of it in the same fashion. We address all the rest of them.
Just wanted to make sure it didn't...
For the sake of tidiness, if nothing else.
Perfect. Very good. Are you concluded?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, that the Board reject the exception and uphold the specific provision, this specific provision of the recommended order. Are there any comments from the Board? Seeing none, I'll take a voice vote, starting with Mrs. Marinelli.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
And the Chair votes aye to the Board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four. Mr. McKinley?
Anything from you, Ms. Mihawk? Ms. Mihawk? I guess that's a waiver?
No, sir. I was trying to get it.
All right, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, I think I'll just address this once in... So the issue is whether prior disciplinary history is relevant in a case such as this where we seek termination. I'll start by saying that your collective bargaining agreement that you have specifically provides that it is relevant so long as the prior discipline is reasonably related, and that's the only standard we have to work with, reasonably related. In addition, in this particular case, something that was unique was they raised a defense that the district had not followed progressive discipline. All right? So if you either or both of those make prior discipline relevant... So I've been doing this for the district since 1996, and I don't think we've ever had a case where we didn't go through the prior discipline that was the basis of where we got today. So we all know we have to start with a verbal reprimand, and then a written reprimand, and then there's a suspension is administered, which is the way it's written, and then there's termination. So we can't really talk about termination if we don't prove that these other three things happen first. And so to say that prior discipline is not relevant seems to me to be a bit disingenuous in light of the fact that it's something that we're required to do. The judge accepted it willingly, as they have in every case that I've ever been a part of. And if we're talking about, if we had to take this type of discipline and put it in a bucket, it would be the bucket of the health, safety, and welfare of students. Okay? I've had lots of other cases where the bucket was, it was acts that occurred outside the school district. It was performance evaluations. So there's reasons other than this that you can wind up in front of the district being terminated, and you would put those in a bucket, and that's what reasonably related is. So in this particular case, every single incident we brought in front of the judge related to how she interacted with a student, and that interaction affected that student's health, safety, and welfare. And it got worse during, from 2017 to 2021. And so in light of that, to say that it's not relevant, I think it really wasn't even a question for the ALJ. I mean, she accepts that type of evidence, again, as long as it's reasonably related, and it was in this case.
Thank you. Are you concluded?
Yes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion from the Board on item number four.
I move that the Board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the Board? Seeing none, I will take a voice vote. Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mr., sorry, Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
And the Chair votes aye that the Board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended... provision of the recommended order and passes unanimously. Moving on to item number five. Mr. McKinley?
Anything, Ms. Meehock? I'll take that as a no. Mr. Robinson, do you have anything you want to add?
No, this is along the same lines as what we talked about previously, which is a general objection to anything that happened in the past. So, I think that there certainly was substantial competent evidence to support that, and I would urge you all to reject this exception.
Thank you, I will entertain a motion from the board on item number five.
I move that the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are there any comments from the board? Pardon me. Seeing none, we will take a voice vote to, that the board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
The chair votes aye, and the motion passes unanimously again to uphold, that the board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Moving on to item number six. Mr. McKinley?
Item number six. Nothing from Ms. Meehock? Mr. Robinson, anything on this item?
No, this is, this relates to, it's a little different, but it relates to the judge's finding of credibility concerning the testimony of Ms. Schaefer, that she was unaware that she had the right to grieve something such as a verbal or written reprimand, and the judge just didn't find that credible, and, you know, I'd urge you to do the same.
Thank you very much. Just for a point of clarification, I don't know if we lost Mrs. Meehock?
No, I can't.
Oh, good, it just, the way it showed, it was worried, I wanted to make sure, very good, thank you so much. Mr. Robinson, I'm sorry, are you concluded?
I am done, thank you.
And, and I just, because we didn't hear anything, Mrs. Meehock, did you have any comments on item number six?
Not at this time, no.
Thank you very much, okay, then I will entertain a motion from the board.
I move that the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are there any comments? Seeing none, I'll take a voice vote that the board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, and the vote passes unanimously to reject the exception and uphold the specific provision of the recommended order. Moving on to agenda item number seven. Mr. McKinley?
Ms. Meehock, anything? Just want to make sure you're still plugged in, we're afraid we're going to lose you.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have anything else.
Okay.
And I don't have anything either, this is the same issue relates to the prior discipline.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I move that the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are there any comments? Seeing none, we will take a voice vote, and the motion is that the board reject the exception and uphold the specific provision of the recommended order. Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
The chair votes aye, and the motion passes unanimously to reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Moving on to item agenda number eight. Mr. McKinley?
Yes, Ms. Meehock, you're waving all of them down to the, down to the penalty, or where, you want to speak on this issue?
Correct, you can, you can skip me on all the findings of fact.
Okay. Very well, if you change your mind, let us know. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. This relates to the issue of progressive discipline, and if you've looked at the record, you'll see that the district took two different positions, both are consistent with one another because of the language in the collective bargaining agreement. There is provisions for progressive discipline in the collective bargaining agreement, and the district provided evidence to the ALJ, and it, this relates specifically to the suspension issue, that the superintendent at that time did recommend a suspension. It just so happened that simultaneously with that, Mrs. Schaefer had a complaint that had been filed with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. In addition, the administration at Sarasota Middle was looking for some way to move her out of the position of school counselor, given all the issues that had occurred in the brief five months that she had been there. So, in conjunction with Mr. Hareda, a universal settlement was resolved with the union and the teacher that was signed off on by everybody. It's called a memorandum of understanding, which was part of the evidence in this case. And that memorandum of understanding did a number of different things. It had her dismiss the EEOC complaint, it moved her out of Sarasota Middle and on to Ashton Elementary, and in addition, it resolved this particular grievance by administering a written reprimand. But, the collective bargaining agreement doesn't say that thou shall serve this suspension, it says the suspension shall be administered. And in this case, the suspension was administered by the superintendent, but it was settled by the agreement of all the parties, including Mrs. Schaefer. So, on that basis, I think that the ALJ correctly found one, that progressive discipline was followed, and you'll see elsewhere in there that she also found that the allegations and incidents that occurred at Tatum Ridge during the brief three days she was there in that summer session amounted to a flagrant violation of the rules and responsibilities of a teacher, because they actually involved, you know, physical harm to students. So, that's the kind of thing where we don't have to do progressive discipline, we can skip straight to termination if that's what's appropriate in this case, and the judge found both of those in this case, I would encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no additional comments, I will entertain a motion from the board on item number eight.
I move that the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are there any comments from the board? Seeing none, I will take a voice vote, and the motion is that the board reject this, the exception and uphold the specific provision of the recommended order. Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
The chair votes aye, and the motion to reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order passes unanimously. Moving on to item number nine. Mr. McKinley?
Yes, this item, thank you, Madam Chair, this item is a finding of fact, Ms. Meehock has waived on the findings of fact, and Mr. Robinson has a chance.
Thank you, we've cited to the record where there is substantial competent evidence to support this finding, so I don't really see the point in belaboring it, it was pretty obvious to the ALJ.
Thank you very much. Seeing no additional comments, I'll entertain a motion from the board on item number eight.
I move that the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I'm sorry, for clarification, I said number eight, it is number, we're on number nine, but thank you. Is there, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reject the exception and uphold the specific provision of the recommended order, will do a voice vote, Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
The chair votes aye, and the motion to reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 10.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is still a finding of fact, so Ms. Meehock has waived, and Mr. Robinson, do you have anything to add?
No, there's substantial competent evidence to support this.
Thank you, seeing no additional comments, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I move that the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are there any comments from the board? Seeing none, we will take a voice vote, and the motion is that the board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
The chair votes aye, and the motion passes unanimously to reject this, the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Moving on to item, agenda number, I'm sorry, agenda item number 11, these are strange.
Let's see, this is also a finding of fact, finding of fact number 54, Ms. Meehock has waived, Mr. Robinson?
Is it 54 or 52?
Could be a typo, 52.
52, thank you. Yes, there's substantial competent evidence to support this, and we cited that to you all on the record.
Thank you, no additional comments, I'll entertain a motion from the board, we're on item, agenda, item number 11.
I move that the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are there any comments? Seeing none, I'll take a voice vote, and the motion is that the board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
The chair votes aye, and the motion passes unanimously to reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Moving on to item number 12. Mr. McKinley?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this one is, involves finding of fact number 54, I apologize, I got ahead of myself. Ms. Meehock has waived, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, we've cited that there is substantial competent evidence to support this finding of fact, I have nothing further.
Thank you, seeing no additional comments, I will entertain a motion from the board.
I move that the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I'll take a voice vote, and the motion is that the board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
The chair votes aye, and the motion passes unanimously to reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Moving on to item number 13. Mr. McKinley?
Thank you, Madam Chair, item 13 is a finding of fact, Ms. Meehock has waived, Mr. Robinson?
I have nothing further, there was ample evidence to support the marks on the young boy's feet.
I will entertain a motion from the board.
I move that the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is to uphold the, sorry, to reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order, will take a voice vote, Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
The chair votes aye, and the motion passes unanimously to reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Moving on to item number 14.
Thank you, Madam Chair, item number 14 is a preponderance of the evidence determination that the respondent received progressive discipline, so it's a little different than a finding of fact, it's a conclusion of law, so Ms. Meehock, do you have anything you'd like to add here? Ms. Meehock?
Oh, sorry, I, I don't know what I'm doing wrong today.
We're on 14.
Yes, no, I don't have anything else to add, other than what I already stated in the written exceptions and what I stated at the beginning of this proceeding.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Yes, the ALJ made 56 findings of fact that are the basis of these four or five conclusions of law, and quite frankly, this ALJ's been at this for a long time, and I think she's got it all in there, that everything needs to be there, and it's all based on those 56 findings of fact, so I really don't see any reason for the agency to alter those conclusions of law, and that would be all I'd have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinley, just to confirm, this is still whether an exception to reject or accept?
In this case, a conclusion of law, so otherwise, it would be the same consideration and action by the, by the board. To reject the suggested, the substitute conclusion of law.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to either reject the exception or accept and modify, so, or there are other options, I shouldn't say that, those are the only, so I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I move that the board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I'll take a voice vote, Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
The chair votes aye, and the motion to reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order passes unanimously. Now, we are on to agenda item 15. Mr. McKinley?
Anything on number 15, Ms. Meehock? Mr. Robinson?
Yes, this is the section of the recommended order that recommends that the penalty in this case be termination. If we go back, that was the recommendation of the administration, it was the recommendation of the superintendent as well, so those are consistent with one another. There really is a mountain of evidence in this case to support the idea that, and I think that Mr. Dumas said it best in his testimony, that when he reviewed all of the prior discipline before he made a recommendation to the superintendent, that what we were seeing here was an escalation of behavior, and to the point that Mrs. Schaefer lasted but three days of a four-week summer session before she had a physical altercation with a student, and these aren't just any students, you know, these are pre-kindergarten, non-verbal ESE kids. The little boy in question, of course, we refer to them by their initials, they do have names, but it's MR, he never returned to that classroom, he went somewhere else. So, you know, it's sad to say that a career ends this way, but the facts of the matter support that, and it just, you cannot put someone like that in the position of kids that are that vulnerable, or any kids for that matter, that we are entrusted to educate. So, I would ask you to uphold that penalty of termination.
Thank you, if there are no additional comments, I will entertain a motion.
Excuse me, I would like to respond to, to that.
You're recognized.
Okay, as I had mentioned in the beginning, this, this is a career-ending devastating action that you're about to take here, and the fact that Ms. Schaefer has been in the classroom for several years since the incident happened shows that it really isn't quite as egregious as it's being made out to be at this time. These incidents were all different in some way, shape, or form, they happened over many years, and frankly, you know, if she was such a danger to all these students, then why would the school board have put her in a classroom with four-year-old, non-verbal, autistic students? So, I don't think that anyone thought at that time, and I don't think anyone thinks now, that she's really a true, you know, concern for safety of these students. And as I mentioned earlier, she's been teaching and loves teaching the adult education courses, and I think that would be a perfect fit for her, the district could allow her to fulfill her contractual obligations, the district could allow her to finish out her career there, and, you know, it could be much better for all involved to just allow her to, to finish her career and, and go out on a, on a positive note, rather than have all of these things that happened over multiple years come back to haunt her, so, I ask that you at least consider the fact that you, you do have the opportunity to mitigate the penalty, and in mitigating that penalty, you could limit the scope of her practice to just adult students, and, and I believe that's a good way to, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Meehock. Are there any additional follow-ups? Mr. Robinson, no, okay, so there, and Mr. McKinley, are there any additional comments?
No, no, thank you, Madam Chair.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I move that the board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, that the board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. Are there any comments? I see Mr. Edwards and Mr. Enos, I'll recognize Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. Before this vote, I just want to make sure that the message is sent clearly to employees that, from my perspective, our employees are valuable, and we care for them, and we do everything we possibly can to reward them, and look even when violations or mistakes happen, to find ways to resolve. We believe in second chances. And I don't want any employee to misunderstand this process, which happened rather rapidly, for them to think that any of us, for that matter, didn't take time and due diligence to really read and understand all of the information that was provided. So I just wanted to make sure that any employees that were paying attention to this hearing got that message loud and clear.
Thank you very much. Mr. Enos?
I also would like to, you know, I'll say the same thing that Mr. Edwards says, but I'll also take it a little bit further, is that, you know, as a parent of three students that had come through the district, you know, we have a duty, as we are their caretakers and local parentis, that we need to make sure that we do everything possible to make sure that those children are safe and that they come to school, and as a parent, whether it's you're a high school kid, or you're a pre-K, ESE, or whatever it is, is that we are there to protect these students. And I would take exception to the attorney in reference to that, you know, that since it's okay that she is now at adult education, I could see the escalation, I could see in regards to the other incidents that occurred before that, is that, you know, based on this and the fact that the judge found, you know, it's something that the expectation of a parent and as a citizen of this county is that we do everything within our power to make sure our kids are safe, and that if we do come to a situation which was show that the child was injured during this case, I think that it is our duty to uphold the order, but also to make sure that our kids are always safe at all time, and I will be absolutely supporting the termination based on the progressive history and as we move forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes, I'd like to also go along with what my fellow board members have stated, but as a former special education teacher, when things happen with our most vulnerable, especially non-verbal pre-K, and then looking at the history of the progressive discipline, I support the recommendation of the board, and that's my support. And also that we did give many second chances to this particular employee as we like to do, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no additional comments, I'll just conclude with, I want to thank counsel, thank staff, and highlight, and I think Mr. Edwards also said it, you know, we take due process very seriously. We support and want to ensure both our mission to support our staff, but also ensure we have a safe working and learning environment for all. And then, as you can see, this has gone to an extensive due process, which I think is important to highlight, and has worked its way through it. With that, I will see, I see no additional comments, so I will do a voice vote, and again, just reminder, the motion on the floor is that the board reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order. I'll start with Mrs. Marinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion to reject the exception and uphold this specific provision of the recommended order passes unanimously. I do not believe, I think that concludes any items we have on the agenda. Mr. McKinley, is there any outstanding?
You'll submit a proposed order, Mr. Robinson?
I will.
That's the last of the housekeeping.
Okay, if there are additional comments by the board, seeing none, the meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.